You're live.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our work session. Today is Monday, May 12, 2025. It's approximately 1:00 PM. I'm Mayor Eric Enriquez. We will start with a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the globe, as well as the courageous men and women of the Las Cruces Police and Las Cruces Fire Department that keep our city safe 24/7/365. If you'd join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and start with the agenda items, 2.1. We'll start out with Visit Las Cruces presentation. Rochelle Miller Hernandez, start us off.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, Mayor Pankomo, sorry, and councilors. For the record, I am Rochelle Miller Hernandez, Visit Las Cruces Executive Director, and today my team and I are here to present our Visit Las Cruces Annual Update. First, I would like to start with a short video describing what the VLC program is all about.
Visit Las Cruces, a key program of the City of Las Cruces, your gateway to Southern New Mexico's premier destination, where more than just tourism, we're economic drivers, community partners, and ambassadors of our city's unique spirit. Our mission: to boost local economy by attracting visitors, conferences, and events. From our Main Street Visitor Center, we showcase Las Cruces' diverse attractions, from mouth-watering cuisine, outdoor adventures, to rich culture and space industry innovations. By promoting tourism, we support local businesses, improve infrastructure, and enhance quality of life for all Las Cruces. We're not just welcoming visitors, we're fostering community pride and sustainable growth.
So this video was originally produced for our HR department. They're putting together this great project to introduce our programs to new employees, so this is part of it. And it featured Ed Carnethan's voice, the voice of the Aggies. So next, I want to...
Visit Las Cruces, a key program of the City of Las...
Let me... There we go. Sorry. So a reminder of our staff. Currently, we have myself. We have a VLC intern that's vacant at this time, Leslie Galbadon is our executive assistant. I just wanted to mention how long they've been here with the city. She's been here eight years. And Sonia Benuelos, who's not in the crowd today, our audience today, is our visitor information specialist. She just celebrated 26 years. We have Lorena Lozano, who was an intern, came back as our communication specialist, and now our director of marketing for five years. Underneath her is Norm Detlaff, who has been with the city for 14 years. And if you could wave when I mention your names, Lorena. And then we have Nuvia, who was an intern and is now a marketing specialist. She's been here about a year as a full-time employee. Sergio Salinas, our distribution specialist, has been with the city for... Sorry, Sergio, 15 years. Then we have Liz Vega, our event manager, who was out when I was putting together the years. How long have you been with us now?
About 13 years.
Albert Herrera, who is our Director of Sales, has been with the city for 13 years. Ed Carnethan, just a little over 20 years. He's our Sports Sales Manager. Hillary Dutcher, our Outdoor Rec and Destination Experiences Manager, 12 years. And then we do have a vacant Convention Services, or excuse me, Sales Manager. And I've been with the city almost 18 years. So we have a very seasoned crew. We also have our Advisory Board, Alice Caruth, who is currently our President of our Board, is here with us today. She's with T minus Space by N2K Media. Our Board, we're required to have five Board members. Two have to be from the hotel industry, two from the hospitality and tourism industry, and one at large. So we also have Stephanie Hawkins, who's with the owner of Mesia Valley Wine and Brew Tours, Alexandra McKinney with New Mexico Historical Sites, Kevin Perez with Heritage Hotels, which you would also know as Hotel Encanto here locally in Hilton Garden Inn. And we have Nicholas Pierce with the Town Play Suites. So some of you were not with us the last time, councilors, we did our presentation. But it's a reminder how we're funded. We are funded by lodger's tax. Actually, I think everyone here today has been with us. But just a reminder, we are funded solely by lodger's tax, with the exception of a couple grants that we get. And that's typically either we received money from ARPA, and then we received money from the state occasionally, the Tourism Department. In FY24, our lodger's tax revenue was 2.8 million. That is generated from the 5% lodger's tax per night. And revenues allowable uses are primarily promoting, marketing, and advertising Las Cruces as a tourism destination. As our Marketing Director will remind you, you will not see a lot of our advertising, because we primarily have to advertise outside the area. Every, almost every year, the... They don't have it posted yet, but the New Mexico Tourism Department does do an Economic Impact Report. Their latest report available is from FY23. And they do do it by the county. But actually, a lot, just to let you know, a lot of our county does not collect, the county itself does not collect lodger's tax. It's the municipalities. But, meaning, excuse me, the towns, the cities. I believe they don't do it, because most of the hotels are in those cities, and not just the rural county areas. So 521 million approximately was, in the report, recorded in visitor spending for our county. And 8.4% of the jobs in our county are sustained through tourism and hospitality. So with that, I'm going to pass this on to Albert Herrera, who is our Sales Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and City Council members. For the record, I'm Albert Herrera, Director of Sales for Visit Las Cruces. I'll be speaking to you directly on behalf of the sales team. The primary goal of the sales team is to promote Las Cruces as a desired destination, and to generate overnight stays and visitor spending. This is broken down into a team effort, into basically three markets. So the first market would be convention and meetings market, which I'm currently handling. Sports market, Mr. Ed Carnethan, and, as Rochelle mentioned, the voice of the Aggies. And outdoor recreation, along with leisure and group travel, Ms. Hillary Dutcher. We are our industry's local liaisons, and promote the city through the power of storytelling when visiting potential clients and visitors. Essentially, we are the face of Las Cruces when traveling and representing our city in our industry. On a national EEI, we roughly spend $234, I'm sorry, $234 is spent per day for conventions. The motor coach industry is about $165 per day, $150 for adult sporting groups, and $120 for youth sporting groups. The sales team works hard to perfect our craft and informing potential clients on what Las Cruces has to offer. We are consistently networking with organizations, event directors, meeting planners, tour operators, key potential influencers, to inform them on Las Cruces, the real New Mexico. Ways of reaching potential clients that have been proven to be productive for us is through attending trade shows, quarterly newsletters, mailing campaigns, along with familiarization tours. We have a proven success rate on capturing business when hosting a site tour. Once a client agrees to come to a hosted visit to Las Cruces, they usually fall in love with it. I mean, who doesn't, right? We all live here. We all live it. You know, it's one of those things, we do get in front of clientele, and on a national level, they're like, where's Las Cruces? Where in New Mexico? So to be able to have them come out and actually have a site visit is very promising for us, for the fact that they're actually utilizing and looking at our area. And then, once they come into New Mexico in general, people usually always fall in love with it. And here, say, with Las Cruces, it's the same boat. Attending industry trade shows is our number-one way to get in front of clients and build relationships. According to the Meeting Planner's International Outlook, the report showed that businesses that would be back to normal in 2024. As of the first quarter addition for 2025, 65% of professionals have found this to be true, are back to the pre-pandemic level. They did rise up in 2023. 24 was supposed to kind of level out, and 25 is leveling out once again in regards to all markets. Some exciting things have been happening at the Las Cruces Convention Center as well. They have installed a new HD digital screen, along with new furniture. They've also installed new carpet replacement in 2024. They're upgrading to fiber-optic high-speed internet. The New Mexico State University's Art Department installed an art on the north terrace of the center. And their chef, Chef Armando, has created what he calls "Chef Creates." It's an event where, once a quarter, he has an intimate, unforgettable dining experience with a rotating four-to-five-course meal, or course menu, I apologize, that's open to the public. The event is geared towards highlighting the chef's talent. Now, he created that, and it's actually going extremely well. Each one of them that they've had has been sold out in that capacity. It's also utilized as a sales tactic as well. Their sales staff is actually inviting potential clients that are hosting conferences, conventions, and meetings or trade shows, to actually come down specifically for that event. So it's on a lot smaller of a scale, roughly about, it's capped out at roughly about 40 people, again, to really kind of showcase what the Las Cruces Convention Center can do food-wise. The Convention Center had a total of 25 conferences/conventions in 2024, and for 2025, they're currently pacing to exceed that number. I'd like to note that not all meetings held at the Convention Center are considered conferences and/or conventions. A few factors that go into this are the number of attendees and estimated room nights that actually make them either a conference and/or a convention. So we can have a trade show that has 3,000 people, but if those 3,000 people are local, it's not going to be actually clarified as a conference and/or convention. The Convention Center's staff, sales staff, continues to partner with Visit Las Cruces on our sales efforts, and currently attending trade shows with us. Moving on to the convention market specifically, of course, I can go on and on and on about conventions in each market, so I just went ahead and threw a couple of them up there just to kind of highlight. 2025, we actually hosted the Agrability National Training. The Agrability is a national program that helps people with visible and invisible disabilities get the help they need to be able to continue farming and ranching. And the Farm &amp; Ranch Heritage Museum actually has an exhibit specifically solely on this. So we worked with them, as well as New Mexico State University, to actually go out and bid and try to host their 2025 conference, and we hosted that back in March. So that was definitely a highlight, and we got tons of kudos in regards to the city, the Farm &amp; Ranch, and Mischu, and so forth. Another one they like to highlight, and not only because I know Mayor Enriquez is in this picture, up to the top, my right, and probably your left, I don't know if you guys can see it. Mayor Enriquez actually spoke at the American Walking Club Biannual Convention that just occurred a couple weeks ago. So this convention actually had 300 people that were here for seven days straight, walking all over Las Cruces. So you might have seen them during the farmer's market. They also went out to White Sands. Not only did they hit all of Las Cruces, they went to Mesia, they went to the Bosque State Park. They also went out to El Paso. They did walks in surrounding communities as well, Almagordo, Ruidoslo, Silver City, Albuquerque. So they pretty much encompassed the entire state. However, the main seven-day conference was actually hosted here in Las Cruces. In 2024, we hosted the Agricultural Historical Society that spent a week in Las Cruces, not only having their meeting, but exploring all things in Los Cruces, all things in agriculture. So the picture right in the middle is actually me welcoming them on one of their tours. So they had multiple tours throughout multiple days, showcasing all things agricultural-based. In 2026, we'll welcome back the New Mexico Municipal League Conference. Moving on to the sports market, this is definitely a highlight. Mr. Ed Carnethan, and of course, the voice of Aggies, was actually, was inducted into the New Mexico U triple-S A Hall of Fame for his longtime partnership with the organization. His support and efforts ensure that we host competitive softball and baseball tournaments throughout each year. But to be able to be inducted into the Hall of Fame, congrats, Ed. A few additional highlights on the sports market. The Holinchalala Softball Tournament was nominated and won the 2024 New Mexico Top Hat Award for the Most Outstanding Event Throughout the State. The award is given through New Mexico Hospitality Association. As we all know, the Holinchalala is a staple in Las Cruces. It's the largest single-weekend 48-hour continuous-play, adults-low-pitch softball event in the United States. So definitely something that we wanted to make sure we highlighted and nominated in four, and they actually won the award. So definitely a highlight for us. The State 47 Las Cruces Marathon, and half marathon, was recently recognized as one of the top 50 best Boston qualifiers for 2025. And again, another highlight for Visit Las Cruces. This event was actually created in-house, and we hosted it for about two years, and then we partnered with Wanderlust Running Company. The event continues to grow each year and happens annually in January, coordinating with the anniversary of the date that New Mexico was recognized as a state. Moving on to the tourism and outdoor recreation. In 2024, we capitalized on site visits in the motor coach market. So the motor coach market is those companies that sell different destinations and sell different itineraries, and you kind of jump on their motor coach and kind of cross-country it, right? Anywhere from a specific destination, or going literally from one side of the United States or to the other. And we brought in a variety of motor coach companies to showcase what Las Cruces has to offer in tourism. We're excited to say that we are now getting back onto their itineraries through 2028. This market was one of the harder markets to recoup and come back after COVID. And so, to be able to see those motor coaches come into Las Cruces again is definitely a highlight for us. A lot of them either redesigned all of their itineraries and excluded Las Cruces, and/or went to just larger markets, meaning larger cities. So to be able to see us getting back onto their itineraries is definitely a positive for us. Las Cruces also hosted the Outdoor Travel Riders Association Board Meeting in February 2024. The group hosted their annual conference in El Paso in September of the same year. During that annual conference, Las Cruces hosted roughly about 150 outdoor travel riders before dinner out at the Rio Grande Winery. During their board meeting, which occurred first, and that board meeting was here in Las Cruces, they went on a gravel ride with some local cyclists. They also had a guided hike with the friends of OMDP NM, and went birdwatching at the Mesia Valley Bosque State Park. Las Cruces was also hosted to the New Mexico Outdoor Economics Conference in 2024, having over 325 attendees. The conference doubled its size since its inception, where Las Cruces hosted its first annual conference. And last, new and exciting for 2025 is the Backyard Alter Run. This is a 24-hour, 100-mile endurance trail run race that will be taking place in the Prehistoric Trackways National Monument. The route is a 4.2-mile loop. Runners must run a minimum of one loop per hour, where they try to become the last person standing. I don't know about you all, but I cannot run 100 miles in 24 hours. I'm sorry. So more kudos to them. The runners are allowed to leave the race whenever they've met their goal, or feel as they have endured as much as they can, even without finishing the race. The goal is to finish and complete 100 miles in a 24-hour period. On the outdoor rec side, Visit Las Cruces' role in outdoor recreation is to support businesses, organizations that promote outdoor recreation in Las Cruces via marketing efforts, event promotion, providing information about letters, providing information about, and letters of support for grant opportunities, and be a resource to visitors, so they know what recreational opportunities are available to them. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and City Council members, thank you for your time. I am now going to introduce Ms. Elizabeth Vega, our Events Manager.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm Liz Vega, Event Manager with Visit Las Cruces. Our office technically produces only one event in-house each year, Mida Las Cruces, which I'll talk about in a minute. But we assist many, many more local producers of events, to help build a year-round calendar full of rich experiences you can only get in our community. On this slide is a selection of events Visit Las Cruces has supported in a variety of ways. The Las Cruces Space Festival will be celebrating its eighth year this September. Previous support of this event by Visit Las Cruces has been marketing and advertising, printing, event logistics. And last year, we even brought NASA astronaut Nicole Stott to this very City Council Chamber for a presentation on her time aboard the International Space Station. We had about 80 attendees, wowed that they got to hear from the astronaut, who was the first to watercolor in space, and the first to live tweet from the ISS. We also support the Las Cruces International Film Festival, that has grown into a vibrant tourism event over its decade of existence. And newer events, like the Las Cruces Pecan Festival, who use our space for meetings, and is an event the New Mexico Department of Tourism is excited to see grow, as agricultural tourism becomes a larger trend. We also become more involved year over year with the Southern New Mexico Pride Parade in October. This event is the largest pride parade in our region, and has the continuing potential to provide a safe and welcoming celebration for members of the LGBTQIA+ community. An event we are very proud to have launched earlier this year, pun intended, is the Mesia Valley Balloon Rally. After a 17-year hiatus, a dedicated group of local enthusiasts contacted us for help to fill the skies with hot air balloons. The first year back was a huge success, and they are excited for year two, January 16 through the 19th, 2026. This is just a selection of special events we are involved with, but we are growing our portfolio, and always welcoming more opportunities for tourists to experience our authentic culture. Coming this year is a revamp of the very popular outdoor bike packing event, Danger Bird. And I am really excited to talk about our work with the inaugural Southern New Mexico Book Festival, coming to you and readers and writers everywhere in October. Now to Mida Las Cruces. Our small team is still recovering from the fantastic event we produced, and the 300,000 cumulative steps we took a few weeks ago on Saturday, April 26. This third annual event is a sizable celebration of all the things that make Las Cruces unique. We want attendees to look, Mida, all the experiences on offer, from outdoor recreation, history and culture, arts, cuisine, and music. This year, about 12,000 friends, families, and visitors joined us and enjoyed the addition of very popular luchador matches, Dia de los Muertos stilt walkers, and a first-of-its-kind drone show that we are still hearing people rave about. It is a labor of love. It is a labor of love. But it is an event that the community has embraced. It is also an opportunity for local tourism-related organizations to showcase, like Friends of the Oregon Mountains Desert Peaks, Bureau of Land Management, New Mexico Historical Sites, the Four by Four Club, city public art, museums, and library. And the balloon rally was out with a full-size balloon basket to take pictures in. The numbers are in, and this year's Mida's PR value was $3.8 million. We're already brainstorming ways to make next year's Mida more impactful and inclusive. It truly is a celebration of everything the real New Mexico has to offer. With that, here's a brief recap of the 2025 Mida Las Cruces. I'll now turn it over to Lorena Lozano, our Director of Marketing.
All right. Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council members, I'm Lorena Lozano. I'm the Director of Marketing for Visit Las Cruces. So as fiscal year 2025 rounds down, I'm just going to highlight a few of some big projects that I worked on. And this is in addition to everything we do throughout the year. So the first thing... So the first thing you see is our official 2025 Visit Las Cruces Visitors Guide. It was released January first. Our cover art was done by Tina Ballou. You can see this actual mural on the Cruces Creatives Building, and it was also part of like a citywide art project where people could come and actually take part in painting the mural. So that is our cover for this year. One thing I would like to note is it's all done in-house, so we do it with our team at Visit Las Cruces, and it also has no ads because of this. So we hear a lot of really amazing, excuse me, a lot of really amazing feedback from people during our trade shows and our travel shows of the fact that it does not have ads. They can just kind of focus on all the amazing things there are to see and do in Las Cruces. The second thing I'm going to show you is some of our new visitor center merch. If you were here for the presentation last time we did this, I did mention that after our rebrand, we saw a pretty big spike in the interest in our visitor center merchandise, and so that's really continuing today. We did some new products towards the end of last year, and this is what they are. The video itself is an ad or something that we do play on social media, just to remind people that we are here and they can come and kind of take a piece of Las Cruces home with them. At the end, you'll see candles. There's three candles that we worked on with Stone Oak Collective. They were custom-made for us so that we could showcase some amazing scents that are very specific to Las Cruces. So the first one's going to be prickly pear. The second one is cypress and juniper, which is found throughout the Mesia Valley. And then the last one's my personal favorite, which is a desert rain scent, which focuses on creosote, which is the scent that we smell when it rains here in Las Cruces. And then the last thing I want to highlight for FY25 is the Evergreen Campaign completion. So one thing that we did throughout the entire year is consistently have commercials made specific to certain times of year, and so we created a variety of commercials. They are running year-round, and this is in addition to what we run on top of that, which are, is going to be like our event support, but also videos that we do that highlight and promote some of the other projects that we have. But we are, we have completed this Evergreen Campaign, and so now we have commercials that we run streaming and on social media the entire year to promote Visit Las Cruces, to promote Las Cruces itself, in addition to everything else. So that is something that we are running consistently throughout the year, and that's something that's very important specifically to the goal of what Visit Las Cruces is. So going into fiscal year 2026, some of the current initiatives I want to talk about. The first thing is brand reinforcement expansion. We are going to be advertising in FY26 on Disney Plus and Hulu. So our commercials will be seen on Disney Plus and Hulu amongst some of the other streaming services that we already do advertising with. A second is going to be our multilingual marketing materials. So some of you might know that we do have a Spanish edition of our Visitors Guide, but in addition to this, we actually have continued accessibility on our website, and also we're moving into digital editions. So right now, we have PDFs of some of our print materials on our website right now, so that includes our Visitors Guide. But we are working with, and Nuvia here, who I'll introduce, is completing one that is just for our Visitors Guide and our new Visitors Guide. So when people look through it, they kind of flip through it like an actual book, but there's going to be links to things that they can see on our website to support some of the material and also some of the videos that we have produced. And then the third thing is going to be highlighting specific tourism drivers in and around Las Cruces. So that's with targeted campaign planning. So as I mentioned before, we had Evergreen campaigns where we created commercials that are going to highlight Las Cruces and a variety of things in Las Cruces throughout the year. What we want to do moving into FY26 is do some targeted campaigns, and that means, for example, like I can give you an example of wine. Wine's a really big tourism driver to Las Cruces, so we can structure a whole campaign around wine, printed materials, videos, long-form videos, advertisements, print, things like that, that are just going to target across multiple platforms. And then Rochelle introduced Nuvia. She's our new marketing specialist. She was a former intern. She came to us via NMSU, and we got to keep her for a little while, and then she eventually became part of, a permanent part of Visit Las Cruces. So some of the things that she does for us, she maintains our blog, she does weekly videos for our TikTok. She also helps with a lot of written material and kind of an assisting role for myself with our press releases and maintaining relationships with the news outlets here as well. Norm, just to kind of highlight some of the other staff that you guys might have, might know, but some of their accomplishments, especially Norm, he does a lot of photos, a lot of the amazing photos in our ads and our Visitors Guide, a lot of that is from Norm. So he expands and maintains our Visit Las Cruces photo library, and him and Ed do this awesome podcast, Visit Las Cruces Live. Norm produces and edits that. It's also a video podcast. You can see that on YouTube. And then Setheel, he's our distribution specialist. But two things, there are some kind of amazing things that he's done. He's our RC balloon pilot. So if you've seen our Visit Las Cruces balloon at some of the events, he's the one that's piloting, piloting it. Not only does he do that here in Las Cruces at events in Las Cruces, but he also goes out to places like Colorado Springs, Texas, other places in New Mexico, California, promoting Las Cruces this way. He also got his drone pilot license, so he's doing, expanding our Visit Las Cruces video library with some drone footage as well. And then this is just kind of a small taste of some of the tools that we use to promote Las Cruces, and I'll show you some examples of some of them, but things like having travel riders and bloggers write about Las Cruces, search engine optimization, search engine marketing, social media ads, print ads, maintaining our website, as well as itineraries on our website for people specifically coming in to help them plan their visits. So this will include like couples or families. We can help them a little bit focus on some of those kinds of things specifically that they might want to do. All right, so this first video you're going to see, this is Cara wandering. She's an influencer on Instagram. We had her come down specifically in January to highlight the Mesia Valley Balloon Rally. She has been here before. She is an influencer that we had come down here specifically for that event, but what bringing influencers down does is it introduces Las Cruces to an audience that we otherwise might not have been able to reach. She did an amazing job. This is just one of the videos that she did, but this highlights a lot of the things she did in and around Las Cruces during her weekend here. If you've also been to Mida, you might have noticed like a large group. Those are the influencers that come in via the grant through New Mexico Tourism Department that we have, and they'll come into Las Cruces from places like, they came in this year from places like Utah, California, Colorado, Texas, to promote their trip to Las Cruces and specifically highlight Mida Las Cruces. So this is an ad that we had done. This is an example of our long-form content. So we have a series called The Real New Mexico. This was the first episode that we did. It's about ten, fifteen minutes long. It's three different segments, and what we're doing with this is we're highlighting things in and around Las Cruces. We have a host. Her name is Jessica. In this first episode, we highlighted an Airbnb that's unique here in Las Cruces, a sign company that's locally owned, and then also the Elephant, Elephant Bar, Elephant Ranch Bar over off Pecacho. We did a highlight. He showed us how to make a drink in that part of the segment, so Jessica does a really great job hosting it. We are wrapping up edits on our second episode, so that should be out very, very soon. That particular episode is highlighting kind of like spending a day in Las Cruces, hiking tips for people that have, hope, have never hiked here, more than likely. If you're coming in from somewhere else and you're hiking in the desert, it's very different, so we want to make sure that people are safe. She also highlighted the Bosque Brewing Company. Their founders went to NMSU, went to school at NMSU and started their business, so that we highlighted some of their drinks as well as their food, and then they also went to Fort Southern to kind of show off that attraction. The third thing you're going to see on your screen is going to be the ad that we have running in the New Mexico Adventure Guide. This is our state tourism guide. So this is distributed not only throughout New Mexico, but the United States, as well as internationally by the state. If you see in the corner, the right-hand corner, we have a QR code. This helps us track our investment in this ad. This shows us how many people are actually engaging with the ad, how many people are interested in learning more about Las Cruces and seeing more about Las Cruces and engaging with what we produced. And then the next thing you're going to see is going to be our Starstruck Ad. This is one of three ads that we have at the El Paso International Airport. We are very strategic about that, about it. These are all backlit ads, so we want to make sure that the photos that we have are very striking, are going to stand out. After the installation, they took this photo, and you already see that there's one woman that's actually engaging with the ad and looking at it, and then you'll see the QR code in the corner as well, again, tracking our investment and making sure that people are engaging with our ad. The last thing you're, you're going to see is one of two billboards that we have along I-ten. It's coming in, like if you're coming in from Las Cruces, to Las Cruces from El Paso, you'll likely see this ad. We're trying to be a little cheeky with it, encouraging people to stop in Las Cruces to have a bite to eat. All right, and then the last video I'm going to show you is an example of the Evergreen ads that we created throughout the entire year. This one specifically was an outdoor recreation ad that was created to, to run in the winter time. So because of our mild climate, we are able to outdoor recreate here in Las Cruces year round. This ad ran on our broadcast streaming and socials throughout the month of January and February to highlight our outdoor recreation.
Out here, the land speaks, if you're ready to listen. In the quiet of the Mesia Valley Bosque, nature reveals itself. Mild winter temperatures calling you to explore. Between open roads and the rugged trails of the Chihuahua Desert, the journey is yours to carve. Tee off under the desert skies, wander dunes of gypsum, or ride the trails that have felt the hoofbeats of centuries. Every step brings you closer to something real. Visit Las Cruces, the real New Mexico.
So as Rochelle pointed out, our ads are very targeted outside of the city. You might see them, though, on streaming services, YouTube, things like that, but they all are on our YouTube page so that anyone in the community can see what we are doing. So with that, I will hand it back to our Executive Director, Rochelle.
So just one more slide. We do have, I have a couple more additional updates. Albert did mention earlier the New Mexico Hospitality Association hat, top, top hat nominees and finalists. So I just wanted to highlight that Visit Las Cruces and our industry partners did receive, we were fifteen, fifteen of the categories, we were finalists. We won eight of those. There are a couple I want to point out specifically. We did win the best broadcast campaign for our Real New Mexico campaign. We also won best new experience for Mida Las Cruces Fest, and we are lucky today. I didn't know he was going to be here, but Russ Smith was recognized as Tourism Professional of the Year, which is a wonderful accomplishment. Thank you, Russ. And we, and like I said, we've won many more. And last thing is I am proud to announce that I was appointed by the Governor to the semi-quintcentennial. That just flew off, right? Just took a lot of practice. Commission, and we are tasked with promoting and coordinating events and activities in New Mexico, focusing on celebrating the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the United States, and I am working diligently to make sure that Southern New Mexico and Las Cruces are represented in this celebration. And with that, any questions or comments?
Thanks, Rochelle. Great presentation and great work that you all do. Thank you. Turn it over, Councilor Corrine.
I just wanted to say thank you. I have sent a few conferences y'alls away, and you guys have really helped a whole bunch of different folks that, that are thinking of coming to Las Cruces. I got my new swag, and people are already into, into it, and so I'll be stopping by again to, to pick up more, really, they have really cool T-shirts and stuff if you haven't seen them lately. Great swag, a new, new bunch of swag available, but I just really want to express my gratitude because I've heard so much, so many good things and so many positive, you know, sort of interactions that folks have had with your office, and then I feel like it's, it's putting Las Cruces on the radar. I've seen those ads at the El Paso Airport, and I feel like super proud of, of us representing. So thank you for all that you do and for thinking forward and really putting the best of Las Cruces out there in the, in the world. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, I just wanted to comment the same thing, my gratitude. Thank you for all the work that you do. You know, the Third Annual Mida Las Cruces and already at a value of three point eight million, that's, that's amazing. That's awesome. Bringing back the balloon rally after, what was it, seventeen years and bringing that back, and then continuing the Holinchalala Softball Tournament, you know? What is it, like seventeen states come in, over three hundred, four hundred teams come in? It's great. It puts us on the map. You do, you do a great job in, in promoting, but I do have to say to Albert, thank you as well as all the staff. What I was most amazed when I was able to welcome the America's Walking Club was how long you'd been working on bringing this conference to Las Cruces? Give me, give us that year again. Yeah, since two thousand seven eighteen. It just goes, the dedication, the commitment, the hard work that you all put into Visit Las Cruces, and you make us proud, and, and we're very proud of you all. Thank you very much, Rochelle.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support.
So next on the agenda is a New Mexico Legislative Update, and Barbara Bencomo with Larry Haran.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Barbara Bencomo, Chief Administrative Officer for the City of Las Cruces. Today, we are happy to present you with an overview of the 2025 Legislative Session as the mayor mentioned earlier, Larry Haran, our lobbyist, is also with us to talk about some of the policies and, and initiatives that came forward during the session. But before we get started, I would actually like to recognize some of our legislators and/or their aides who are here with us today, so I'm just going to ask them to stand as I, as I read their names. First, we have Representative Michaela Lara Cadena, District Thirty-three. Representative Joanne Ferrari, District Thirty-seven. Senator Carrie Hamblin, District Thirty-eight. We have Connie Chapman, the Legislative Aid for Representative Angelica Rubio, District Thirty-five. We have Senator Jeff Steinborn, District Thirty-six. Thank you all so much for being here, and before we get into the details of the presentation, I would invite you, if any of you would like to come to the podium to say anything, we welcome that. All right, well, then we will just jump into the, to the presentation. So I'm going to turn this over to Larry Haran, our lobbyist, to go through the overview. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Barbara. Mayor, Members of the Council, for the record, Larry Haran, lobbyist for the City of Las Cruces. It's good to be in front of you again, having survived another session. What I will say is the experience we have with our legislative delegation is positive, which I, I think it's a really good illustration when you see how many legislators came before you today to be present for this, for the legislative update. They make our job a lot easier, and it's a really good delegation. They collaborate well, and they're good to deal with, so it makes, they, they do- So it makes, they do a good service to the City of Las Cruces and Doñana County. So this year was a 60-day legislative session, began on January 21st and ended on March 22nd. As you'll remember, a 60-day legislative session means the field is open for legislators to introduce legislation on any topic, unlike a 30-day or a short session. A total of 1,182 bills were introduced. That seems like a lot. That's still a pretty small number for a 60-day session, but as you'll see when we get into some of the policy issues, they may not have had as many bills as they normally do, but they tackled some pretty heavy topics this session. And then there was 148 memorials, joint memorials and joint resolutions. And then, on behalf of the City of Las Cruces, tracked a total of 142 different pieces of legislation. One thing I didn't put in, in the presentation, but we have, Connie Chapman is here, and as Legislative Aides for legislators, we've talked about modernization of the legislature before you. That's been a policy priority for the city before. This is the first time that every legislator now has a Legislative Aid working for them in their districts. Started before the session, and they would correct me, or when they, when they all were hired, I think the last batch were eligible.
Legislators have room to hire, not all legislators have to hire.
So, just so we can, thank you, Representative, I appreciate that. They do not have to hire a Legislative Aid, they have the ability to hire Legislative Aid. So it's an option for them if they choose not to. So I appreciate that, Representative Cadena. And so that's the first time legislators have had full-time, or have the ability to have staff. So that's part of that modernization effort that we've been talking about. Is it the arrow? I always forget how to work the PowerPoint. So we'll start with crime and criminal competency. That was a big topic we discussed before the council, before the session started. The first half of the 60-day session, the legislature focused primarily on criminal justice reform and criminal competency. What came out of that was House Bill 8, which was, they tagged as their omnibus crime package. They took various pieces of legislation and rolled them into House Bill 8, and that was passed within just over the first 30 days of the session. That dealt with criminal competency restoration, which Chief Story has been very active and engaged with, not only the council, but with the legislature talking about. Expanded criminal commitment and civil commitment of the Assisted Outpatient Treatment Act. The Glock switches or weapon conversion devices were prohibited. Additional sentencing for fentanyl trafficking and changes to DWI blood testing. Made shooting threats a fourth-degree felony, and they added progressive penalties for motor vehicle theft. That was the, that was the main crime package that they passed. Also, House Bill 12, which was changes to the extreme, the red flag law, the extreme risk firearm protection order. This, they made a change to allow law enforcement officers to also petition for red flag petitions. And then also, instead of waiting to relinquish firearms, once the order is served, the person whose service has been filed upon must relinquish their firearms. They also passed Senate Bill 1 and Senate Bill 3 related to behavioral health. They created a behavioral health trust fund with $100 million appropriation to focus on behavioral health services. And then Senate Bill 3 is the Behavioral Health Reform and Investment Act. That created a committee and regional plans and funding strategies for behavioral health services throughout the state. That's heavily, heavy involvement through the Administrative Office of the Corps to come up with those regional plans. And then they also appropriated $200 million to various state agencies to fund behavioral health programs throughout the state. And that's the behavioral health side of the criminal justice reform that they passed during the session. Overall, the state still has positive, very positive budget outlook, although we're starting to see the price of oil dip, production is slowing, and as we've talked about, over 50% of our budget is based upon oil production in the state of New Mexico. They passed a $10.65 billion budget with 30% reserves. As is normal in a 60-day legislative session, they did come up, we, an omnibus tax reform package, although by the time it passed and it came out of, House Bill 14 was the vehicle for, for the tax reform package when it passed. It had an earned income tax credit, foster parent guardian tax credit, health practitioner co-insurance and liquid excise tax portions of it, with a price tag of about $150 million. The, the big discussion, some might call it, it was a pretty robust discussion related to the tax package because originally the tax package was going to be funded with a new, an increase on gas on oil production and equalization tax that they tax oil and natural gas at a different rate. Had they raised the tax on oil, it would have generated, I believe, 400, 400, $450 million that would have funded the tax package. That piece came out when they had the bill passed in the Senate, and so there was no new tax increase on it. So the package that went up to the governor included those pieces, and then it was vetoed post-session. So there was no omnibus tax bill that passed and was signed into law. For us, as you'll recall, one of our priorities for the past several years has been the Essential Services Development Act. And Senator Hamblin was our sponsor for the legislation this year. That's the enabling legislation to allow an exception to the anti-donation clause, to allow spending of state dollars on private property for essential services, which now is defined as any utility that would, that would focus on, primarily on residential development. So what we have to do, or you as a body would have to do, is develop a plan, pass an ordinance, setting forth a criteria for how you're going to determine folks are eligible for some of that funding. We submit that to the Department of Finance Administration at the state. If they approve our plan, we can then get legislative funding to fund those essential household services. So the bill was introduced. Early on in the session, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to get it passed because it was a pretty heavy lift, but it progressed with, I believe, almost unanimous support. We might have had one no vote. We had one no vote on the legislation the entire time through. And so, again, we appreciate the efforts of the delegation, and particularly Senator Hamblin, for carrying that legislation for us. It's three years in a row we've done bills together for the city, so I'm not sure what we'll be doing together for the 30-day to pass another bill. Housing and homelessness, we've had a lot of discussion with you about housing and homelessness. In the budget, 110 million went to the Department of Finance Administration for housing initiatives. When you all, or when you all came to Santa Fe and we had some meetings relating to housing, it was identified that 10 million was going to be designated for the City of Las Cruces, and 80 million was going to be designated for the City of Albuquerque for these housing initiatives. Those did not make it through the line item veto process. The funding remained, but the language specifying for City of Albuquerque and City of Las Cruces was line item veto. So the money is still there. The administration actually reached out right before the veto happened and connected us with Sarita Nair, who's the Secretary for Workforce Solutions, who now is also going to be running the Office of Housing. She's already been down to the City of Las Cruces, had some meetings. So we were assured that the line item veto had nothing to do with the fact that it came to Las Cruces, the administration wanted to make sure they had flexibility to spend as appropriate, and that that money will still be available for us for our housing initiatives. The Office of Housing, Senate Bill 205, which I know many members of the council were tracking, that failed, did not pass, that died in the Senate Finance Committee. And then Senate Bill 267, Senator Hamblin's legislation related to housing application fees passed and was signed into law. And if she wants to add anything on it, I'll let her add specifics, but that adds protection for renters, caps application and late fees for those, for tenants, and also an increase in notice of fees that are going to be passed on to folks. So efforts to help the housing situation. Other funding in the budget, $12 million went to the Rural Air Service Grants, so the City of Las Cruces is still receiving Rural Air Service Grants. So I don't think we had anything where we're trying to get more of that money now, but it's a program that we've utilized, and so it's important for us to ensure that funding is still available for that Rural Air Service Grant, so that received some funding this year. We did receive a $1 million appropriation for the Las Cruces Air Show through the Department of Tourism. There's 200 million that went for water project funds that's available, and 131 million to fund the deficit of that employee group health plan. We've been talking about that for quite a while, where there was a deficit because rates hadn't been raised on state and municipal and local government employees that participated in the state program for health benefits, so there was a deficit. They had tried to assess local governments a few years ago. That resulted in a lawsuit and a stay on that lawsuit. So this year, the legislator, legislature put $131 million in to fund that deficit and take care of that deficit. Inspection of Public Records, we talked about that before the session, about efforts from the Municipal League and also supported by the city council and the clerk about changes to the Inspection of Public Records Act. Three different bills were introduced. The Municipal League's efforts carried by Representative Christine Chandler, and then coming out of the Association of Counties, and particularly Sandoval County, there were two other pieces. Representative Cates sponsored House Bill 139 and House Bill 497 by Representative Catherine Brown. Those were much bigger bites than, than the effort as proposed by Representative Chandler to essentially rewrite the entire act. What it did was about what we expected, no, no IPRA bills passed, but it did generate, start a conversation about needed reforms to the Inspection of Public Records Act. So that's something we'll see again in the interim. The Municipal League will continue their efforts to work with the Foundation for Open Government and the Press Association to see if they can come up with some changes to IPRA. And then you may recall, we had a presentation about the Animal Welfare Trust Fund right before the session. Animal protection came before the council and was here when I presented, and they asked for your support for the Animal Welfare Trust Fund. That bill did pass and received a $5 million appropriation, so there's $5 million available for entities that have animal shelters to obtain some funding for their, for their efforts. Paid family medical leave. It was introduced again, the tactic, or the house of origin changed. This year, they started it in the House. It had passed the Senate and ended up in the House. In previous sessions, this year it started in the House. It passed 3831 out of the House after some pretty significant amendments. The significant changes were it went from 12 weeks to six weeks, paid family leave for what they called family wellness, and then if it unpaid, it offered 12 weeks of unpaid leave for birth or adoption of a child. And even though it was unpaid leave, there was a $9,000 payment in, with the intent of replacing lost wages for the birth of a child that would have come out of the early childhood trust fund. That bill, after it got out of the House, was heard in the Senate Finance Committee, and it failed to pass out of the Senate Finance Committee, so it did not pass again. As we've, as the discussion we've had in the past, it's an important piece of legislation for you all to know about because it would have applied to employees of the city. We haven't been involved in the discussion, but it's something that we'll be back again. This is an effort from the legislators that we're going to see another version of paid family medical leave if the governor gets, gives it a message in the 30-day, if not in the next 60 days. So it's something we just need to continue to be aware of. I'll keep you apprised on, on how those efforts are going. And then, House Bill 6 was introduced by some of the labor unions, and what House Bill 6 does, and it was signed into law, it was sponsored by Representative Pansky out of Santa Fe. If a private entity is getting an industrial revenue bond from a local government, then they are required to pay prevailing wage, like the local government is required to pay prevailing wage on public works projects. Also, this is the second time we've seen this, the local solar access fund, grants for local governments for solar projects. That passed and was signed into law, and there's $20 million available, or will be under that program. And then, as a result of some discussions we had, and you may remember, we talked about a meeting with the Municipal League and some developers prior to the session last fall about changes to local governments' approval of zoning permits, permitting, et cetera, for construction projects. What we did see is we saw three different pieces of legislation that would have preempted local government authority. As it relates to local zoning for master plan developments, there was a piece of legislation that would have restricted your ability to say that you can't have accessory dwelling units or casitas on a piece of property. And then also, there was a piece of legislation that would require you to report on all the permitting and how long it takes for permits to be approved at a local government level. None of those efforts passed, they were opposed pretty strongly by the Municipal League because it was a preempting issue. But it's something to signal that we need to continue conversations with developers, and as it relates to housing and businesses, to make sure we're doing things as efficiently as possible, if we can. Otherwise, what we'll see is more preemption legislation. And that's it. And Capitol Outlay, I'll kick back to Barbara, but before I forget, I will say, and I think I may be stealing a little bit of her thunder, we're going to have, I think it's our third annual Capitol Outlay Forum on July, it's the 3rd, on July 8th, where we invite nonprofits to come to the city. Senator Hamblin was here the last time, Representative Rubio has attended in the past. We present on the city's Capitol Outlay process, how it works at the legislature so those nonprofits know how to tap into Capitol Outlay. So that's going to be July 8th, I think, at 10:00 AM. Nine.
Thank you so much, Larry. Once again, Barbara Bencomo for the record. So this is just a brief overview of our Capitol Outlay process. Once you, as city council, have adopted the city's CIP that forms the basis of what we submit to the state, that documents the Capitol projects that are potentially on the table for us to request funding and support for. We meet with our legislators to understand their interests and priorities. Of course, we have the same discussions and work sessions with council as well to get input, and then we adopt the priorities that we'll be moving forward with in the next legislative session. Once that is complete, and this is typically in January, we submit our priorities to the state through the Legislative Council Services Portal. This year, I'm going to present just a few highlights of some of the priorities we identified, what we requested, and what we received funding for so generously from our supportive legislators. So for the mobile integrated health building, which also encompasses our light program, we requested $2.5 million. We actually received $5.5 million for this project. For our police real-time crime center, we requested $1 million, and we received $1.8 million. For housing, we have two projects that were submitted as priorities, Paseos Verdes and the Amador Crossing Project. We received almost $2 million for them both. We had requested just over $4 million. And for our Thomas Branigan Library, we requested $5.6 million. We received almost $1 million for this project. Altogether, you will see in this graph all of the projects that were funded or received funding from our legislators, everything from the CITMIH building down to inductive And in total, the City of Las Cruces will receive just over $13.8 million. Councilor Corrine is smiling because she was the one who requested this graphic a few years ago, and I just have continued to bring it forward because it's a crowd pleaser, or at least it pleases Councilor Corrine. Next steps, we'll have interim committee meetings, of course, until the next session comes together in 2026. We will have our New Mexico Capitol Outlay Workshop, as Larry mentioned earlier, and that's something that Senator Hamblin so generously helps to facilitate with us, July 8th. We, in addition to going over the city's Capitol Outlay process and how that dovetails with the state process, we, last year, also included an overview of the GRO program, which the COG administers, and we anticipate having them here again, so that they can speak to that separate process, how it works and how it's administered. Of course, as I mentioned, we'll be going through our capital, our prioritization process for our Capitol Outlay projects, once the CIP is adopted. And then, in the fall, hopefully earlier, but typically in the fall, we receive the funding agreements from the state, and we will make budget adjustments for the 2025 projects that received funding so that we can start constructing those projects. So that is the timeline of next steps coming forward. And then, last but not least, I know we mentioned this earlier, we thank our legislators so much for their support, for, for sharing their time with us, to let us know what their priorities are, for listening to us, to hear what our concerns and initiatives are. Just want to play this brief video for them.
Thank you for supporting affordable housing in Las Cruces.
Thank you for supporting urban transit.
Thank you for supporting our libraries.
Thank you for supporting public safety.
Thank you for supporting utilities.
Thank you for supporting public safety.
Thank you for supporting our museums.
Thank you for supporting our museums.
Thank you. And again, a big round of applause for our legislative colleagues. Thank you so much. Whoops, did it again. Let's see. And with that, we'll go ahead and stand for questions. And I think I gotta scroll through here. Oops, did it again. So sorry, but we will stand for questions and I'll invite Larry to come up here as well, in case you all have anything that you would like to ask. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Thank you, Larry and Barbara. Thank you, Larry especially, for all you do for the city and for always answering our call when we say, hey, we're coming up, can you help us please? And you, honestly, you make it very easy coming up there and, and I always feel really, like, really successful and then just really good leaving Santa Fe after spending a day with you. So thank you very much. And then, of course, thank you to our legislators, those that are here today and, but all of your colleagues, I, obviously in, in your investment, in your continuing investment for Las Cruces. I do just want to note that in previous years, we've received a lot more money for housing. And I think this year, I do want to note for the public especially, that it's not that our, our legislators are not interested in housing. It's that I think for a lot of us, we were very excited about the prospect and the potential of those 10 million dollars in the budget. That many of us, of course, then went out and asked our legislators to fund other, other projects, right? And they obviously did and they came through as they always do. And so it's not that they don't care about that. I think that it's, we all just had a bit, bit of a different hope for what that turnout was going to be, that outcome. Thank you so much, Larry, for ensuring that we were able to meet with the Secretary of Workforce Development and really continue to work with our, our housing team, Natalie, to, to make sure that all of our housing projects are at the top of the list and that the state understands that we're ready. If they give us 10 million dollars, we will spend 10 million dollars. So for the, for legislators here, if you talk to Secretary Nair, tell her we're ready and to give us money. So thank you for that. And then, of course, I'm really excited for, for the investment in the Mobile Integrated Health Center and Light Projects. I sent out a lot of texts myself specifically for that project and so I'm, I'm excited for that to, to come to fruition. And then really my last question, Larry, was the animal advocates here locally have been reaching out to, to us a lot about how this, that potential investment could work. Do you have any sort of idea on how that will roll out and how the city can stay on top of receiving some of those funds?
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem. I don't know specifics on that. I'll, I, I will make some inquiries and get back to you just to find out because I'm not sure what that grant program is going to be or the process. So there's still, once they get the appropriation, they'll have to set up how that grant works. And then I'll take the opportunity and I, I should have mentioned it before, when I was here before you in the fall, you asked as a body, how can we be effective in advocating and being more effective with the legislature? And I think what we saw this session was, we saw good participation from you as a governing body, also the city manager and assistant city managers, they came up a couple at different times. Our legislators, every time we asked, can we come see you? They all said yes, without exception. And I think what we're seeing, and we've seen more active participation in the last couple of years, especially related to housing, Chief Story was there a lot, working on public safety. We saw a different level of engagement from you as a body and staff, and I think that that's what, I think you're seeing, that that does bear fruit. And, and they will speak for themselves, but I know the legislators always appreciate it when you take the effort to go up and see them. It's always a pleasure having you there and getting to walk around. I'm glad to know you feel you're successful because sometimes people leave the Capitol wanting to pull their head out or bang their head into a wall, but it does bear fruit. And so, so going forward, I would urge you as a body and also a staff to continue that kind of proactive approach.
And then lastly, I do just want to say a special, very special thank you for legislators for supporting that behavioral health package. I know it's not necessarily something as a body we took a stand on, but you know, that investment is tremendous. So thank you. It's historic and so important. Thank you.
Counselor Rip.
Well, I for once can answer a question instead of just asking one. Thank you so much. Thanks to our incredible animal advocate community. I was forwarded some information recently and it looks like the DFA, the New Mexico Department of Finance Administration, has sent around what they're calling a Animal Welfare Needs Assessment Survey. So that is, that seems to be the first step in seeing how they might create grant criteria and funding priorities. And I've shared this along with our amazing grant team here at the city and they will collaborate, obviously, with the Animal Services Center here locally. So it looks like we have, you know, at least a first step happening.
Actually, I will ask a question, sorry. Probably something I should already know, but when we are generously given beyond what we've asked for, specifically with MIH Building and I believe our Real-Time Crime Center also, certainly in the MIH Building, there was a big disparity. We got like an extra 3 million. So how does that work? A life-size statue of Chief Daniels? Gold-plated? Just kidding, public.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselor, and then I'll, and Barbara will jump in as well. For those projects, and I will look to Barbara for the MIH Building, but I do know from the Real-Time Crime Center, the way we scaled the project was to try and achieve a phase of funding. So like, like on the Real-Time Crime Center, that money will be spent, we'll just be able to use it quicker than we thought. We were going to have to go back, rather than going back for more. And MIH, I'm not sure if that's probably the same answer.
Thanks, Larry. Barbara Bencomo for the record. And actually, I asked Chief Daniels to be prepared for this question because I thought it might come up. Obviously for us, we were looking at, as Larry said, how we scoped the project, what were the words that we used in the proposal that we made to the state for how we would spend the funds. And we, and we tend to either want to make the language broad enough that we could still use it for additional items or additional scopes of the project, but I do want to turn it over to Chief Daniels. He, he wants to add something specific to the MIH Building.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Counsel. I just wanted to follow up on, on, on that. So we will be able to utilize the funding. One of the, the things that is the FFNE, the furnishings for it and getting that completed, we were going to have to likely come back and, and ask for additional funding to get it fully furnished. This will allow us to do that and, and it also relieves a, a very big concern with the, with the recent executive order because 3 million dollars have been congressionally given to us for that. So, so this may further help us if, if we end up having to lose that funding. So, so thank you to everybody. It really relieved some stress on our end.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? No. All right. Again, Barbara, Larry, thank you very much. And to our legislators, thank you for all your hard work, your challenging work, your good service work. We really appreciate all that you do and try to make not only Las Cruces, but our state better. So we thank you for that. Thank you very much. That's all we had for today. So motion to dismiss. To adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse is absent. Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Corran?
Yes.
Counselor Flotus is absent. Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.